Good evening and welcome to the Tuesday, February 26, 2019, business meeting of the Olympia City Council. We've not been here for a few weeks due to a snowmageddon 2019. We're going to be getting an update on the city's response to the snowstorm. But before that, I want to acknowledge that Councilmember Rollins is excused. Other than that, we have a quorum. At this time, I'd also like to invite forward our Director of Community Planning and Development, Keith Staley, to give us some updates on a development plan that's definitely in the planning stage. So, Keith?
Yes, ma'am. Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of council, Keith Staley, Community Planning and Development Director. We've received a number of emails over the last couple of days regarding a project known as Green Cove Park. It's a subdivision located off of Cooper Point Drive on what used to be known as the Sunberg Property. People commonly know it as the Sunberg Property. It's a 50-acre subdivision, and it came in as an application in January, and we sent out notice to the surrounding property owners and parties of, excuse me, parties of interest on February 15. And that has generated a flurry of email activity and questions and calls. So I just wanted to quickly advise the community and the council that this process has only just begun. Literally, we will have a neighborhood meeting here in city council chambers on February 28th. That's this Thursday evening, starting at 6:00 PM. Surrounding property owners and parties of interest can come and hear from the applicant and staff and hear responses to any questions that they might have about the project. We have not issued SEPA yet on this project. We haven't even scheduled a public hearing. So I apologize. The notice of application says that there is an application period that ends, or I'm sorry, a comment period that ends at 5:00 PM on Friday, March 1st. That's the first comment period. That...
Point of order. This isn't an iterative piece of the evening. It's not a question and answer. That's what Thursday night's for.
Yeah. So just briefly, though, first comment period really is more our way of providing notice to other agencies that are reviewing and commenting on this application to sort of move along. It's not a necessity that the community in any way provide comments on or before March 1st. Comments will be accepted on the project up to and including during the public hearing, which has not yet been scheduled. That public hearing is not likely to occur for at least 60 days, if not 90 days or more, depending upon how the review process goes. As I said earlier, staff hasn't issued SEPA on this. The State Environmental Policy Act review has not been issued. When that occurs, an additional notification will be provided to the community, and opportunities for appealing that notification will also be provided. Ultimately, this is heard by our hearing examiner in a public hearing. Members of the public will have an opportunity to provide testimony at that public hearing. The hearing examiner gathers in all of the information, including the public comment, and then renders a decision. The decision is appealable to the local Superior Court should interested parties want to pursue that as a potential remedy. So again, at this point, we are literally just starting this process. The neighborhood meeting is an informal opportunity for the public to come in and to engage in a question and answer session around the application and with the staff and the applicant. That's here, this Thursday, the 28th, in city council chambers, starting at 6:00 PM. There is also a webpage available with project information. All of the reports and all of the project information, application SEPA materials, and public comment will be available on the project webpage. Staff tells me that that project webpage will be available tomorrow about noon. Simply going to the city's webpage, www.cia.limpa.wa.us and typing in Green Cove Park, and it will take you to the appropriate webpage with all of the application materials.
All right. Thanks for that clarification. I think our website has a different address. That was our email, isn't it? Isn't our website?
Olympiawa.gov.
Olympiawa.gov. You gave the...
It'll get there either way. Olympiawa.gov is easier to say, for sure.
Yes, yes. All right. And I've got a hand up by Councilmember Cooper.
Keith, before you go, if it's appropriate, can you let us know? Don't we have a higher level of rigor around our critical areas' standards in that part of town?
Yes. And of course, any subdivision application, basically what we do is we get our regulations out, and we get the application out and all the reports and all the material, and we see how they line up. But yes, the project is within the Green Cove Basin and will be subject to those regulations and standards in the Green Cove Basin. Yeah.
Any other questions from the Dave's? All right. Thank you for that. All right. In the past few weeks, we've had our Communications Director, Kelly, give us an update on our homeless response. But for the sake of time, all of our updates are now available on our website, Olympiawa.gov. Thank you. I just said that. And there's a very detailed page on homelessness and our response to that. So I encourage you, if you're watching at home, to go to that website, and you can also sign up for weekly updates as well. So with that, I need a motion to approve tonight's agenda.
So moved?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We have an agenda, which takes us to item 2A this evening, which is a special recognition. And let me get to that. So this is an annual process we go through with the Association of Washington Cities. Their Center for Quality Communities offers a scholarship. And this year, we have recommended Petra McDonald Engolia as our City of Olympia representative for that scholarship. And I'd like to introduce Kelly again.
Thank you, Mayor, oops, thank you, Mayor Selby, council members. It's Kelly Persprossit, Strategic Communications Director. Good to be up here again. It's my honor to introduce you to the City of Olympia's proposed nominee, to the AWC's Center for Quality Community Scholarship. The scholarship supports high school students, high school seniors who are actively engaged in their community and/or their city government, basically the future leaders of Washington State. Each jurisdiction can nominate one student. Olympia staff reached out to Olympia High School and Capitol High School and received a proposed candidate from each school. After reviewing the applications, staff are recommending Olympia High School student Petra McDonald Engolia as the City of Olympia's representative. Petra is the founding president of Olympia High School Student Chapter of the ACLU. She coordinates food bank collections in her neighborhood, tutors middle school students, all while carrying a really heavy load of AP and honors classes. For me, what was really telling in looking at the materials was how her recommending teacher describes her: calm and always prepared, passionate about her beliefs and about serving other people, gentle and kind to the core. Her nomination requires the council's approval, which we're asking for tonight. But first, I'd like to invite Petra up to say a few words.
Thank you. Hi, I'm Petra. I am an active member of my Rotary Club, and I wanted to thank you tonight for nominating me and having me here. After high school, it is my hope to study history with a concentration in Holocaust and Genocide Studies at Clark University in Massachusetts. I would like to one day teach at a university, but I'm not quite sure what I want to do in between. And I also wanted to thank Ms. Bolts and Ms. Harper, who are here tonight, who have guided me through my college applications and all my scholarship applications and have helped nominate me for this process. Thank you.
Thank you, Petra. So it's just been, just these last couple minutes, just watching your parents be mean in the audience. And several of us up here have watched you grow up in this community, and we couldn't be prouder. Anyone else like to make some comments? Then I'll go ahead and make a motion to approve Petra McDonald Engolia as the City of Olympia representative for the AWC Center for Quality Communities Scholarship.
I'll enthusiastically second that motion.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you.
All right. Good luck. Item 2B is also a special recognition tonight, and that's a report on the recent Thurston County Code Blue homeless response during our hazardous weather. And I'd like to invite back up Keith Staley.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of council. Keith Staley, Community Planning and Development Director. I am very proud to be making this presentation, this special recognition presentation. When I think back to where we were a year ago or two years ago, when we had similar weather events, but we didn't really have an effective plan in place to respond to them, it makes a warm spot in my heart. And it made a warm spot for about 70 of our unhoused citizens here in the community over the recent weather events. The Salvation Army stepped forward and offered their sanctuary. The county came forward and offered money and staff support. Local nonprofit agencies stepped forward and offered staff to staff the shelter. And it came together in a home for people that needed a place to stay. It also demonstrated how well we can, when we think in advance and we coordinate our efforts and coordinate our resources, we can truly have a remarkable impact on people's lives. And we also recognize that not everybody is going to come to Code Blue shelter, that some people are going to choose to shelter in place. And this was the first time that during a weather event like this, that we actually went out to the encampments and went literally tent to tent and said, "How's it going? What do you need? What can we bring to you by way of hats, blankets, water, snacks, socks, gloves, and the like?" Those efforts were all met with thanks and gratitude that was really extraordinary. This is not to say that this was adequate, that it met everybody's needs, that it was perfect, because it's not. But it definitely was a step in the right direction. And two people that had a very key role in that are here this evening. Keely Marino with Thurston County and Mark Sterns with the Salvation Army. Keely's going to be coming up here momentarily now, even, and will provide you with an overview of the services that were delivered and sort of the nuts and bolts of how we did that. And then Captain Mark Sterns will be here to talk briefly about the actual shelter operation, and all of us will be happy to answer any questions that you might have. So thank you.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and members of council. It is my distinct pleasure to come before you in my role as Thurston County Homeless and Affordable Housing Coordinator, which I've been able to do for the last couple of months, and it's been quite lively. And previously, as many people know, I was able to facilitate one of the shelters during Code Blue for five and a half years at Rosie's Place at Community Youth Services. So the Hazardous Weather Task Force and our efforts are very important to me, and I take great pleasure in being able to coordinate it and facilitate those meetings. So our shelter system currently within Thurston County consists of seven year-round shelters. Those serve populations, the single adult population, families with young children, and youth and young adults. So we have Community Youth Services, Family Support Center, Interfaith Works, Salvation Army, all are contracted with Thurston County to provide sheltering services throughout the year. We also have Drexel House with Catholic Community Services and Olympia Gospel Mission, and Safe Place DV Shelter. During the cold weather, which we last year determined was a season rather than individual days based on temperature, runs from November 1st to the end of April. And during that time, three shelters are contracted to extend their capacity during those months, and those are Community Youth Services, Rosie's Place, Salvation Army, and Family Support Center. Beyond that, when there's a Code Blue, we call upon all of our service providers that are offering shelter to go beyond that capacity and offer as many beds as we possibly can. This Code Blue, we did call Code Blue in December, which was three days, and went fine. But this Code Blue went 12 days. And during that time, we were able to serve, we had 536 extra bed nights. So that means each night, there were, an average in the Salvation Army 1505 Worship Center, anywhere from 35 to 66 people who ordinarily are outside of the shelter system. During that time, those 12 days, the regular shelter providers provided 2,747 cold weather beds, averaging about nearly 300 people a night. But on top of that, as Keith mentioned, we were able to provide services out in the community with folks that are outside of the shelter system. And we were, for the first time, we made 270 contacts. Now, that's a duplicated number, not 270 individuals necessarily. But each of those contacts represented at least one other person that they were gathering supplies for back at their encampment. And we distributed about 1,400 survival items in that 12-day period, all in conjunction with so many business owners and government folks and service providers and concerned community members. So it was an extraordinary effort. We're very excited about what we can glean from this to make the next round go even better. But I'm really pleased to bring those numbers forward and the success that Code Blue was this time.
Thank you, Captain Sterns.
I'm Captain Mark Sterns with the Salvation Army, and I can tell you that nobody could have planned for an event like this. 12 days of white on the ground was something that I think took all of us by surprise. But one thing that did come, that we all came away from with all this, was that we all came together as a group, as a team, as concerned citizens to help our neighbors. As Keely just mentioned, 536 heads in beds at our chapel up the street at 1505 is quite a feat. But that could not happen without cooperation and coming together with not just the Salvation Army, but with Interfaith Works, with the Union Gospel Mission, with concerned volunteers around our community. It also took a lot of work from concerned individuals, and they brought blankets, they brought socks, they brought food. It was just an amazing effort. And so the people that came, came hungry, they came tired, they came cold, but they came and they were welcomed. Everybody got a handshake. Everybody was welcomed into what they would call their home for the night. And they slept warm, and they slept dry. We heard stories of how people lost their tent because trees fell on them, or the weight of the snow crushed the tent. That is no way for anybody to live. At least, we were able to give them something for the short term. But it wasn't just the Salvation Army, it was everybody. It was Olympia, and it was Olympia coming together. We, as a community, have got reason to be proud. What does the future look like? It looks great. The Salvation Army is already making plans to house even more at the next event. We are going to be making some dramatic changes, where we are going to be moving our administrative and our social service office off of Fifth Street and moving that up to 1505, so we can put all of our sheltering downtown. That will allow us to sleep even more people closer to home. A lot of people didn't want to go up the hill because it was too far from home, and so that'll allow them to sleep even closer to home. We will be able to house close to 175 at the worst possible times, and that is where we are intending to go. A year from now, things are going to be looking even better for our houseless friends. These are our neighbors, this is part of our community, and we are here to help. I want to thank the City of Olympia for coming together and helping our friends. I want to thank all of the nonprofits for coming together and working together as a team. I'd like to thank InterCity Transit for loaning buses and taking people up to the shelter without cost. That all happened because people cared, and that is something I really appreciate about this community. We remember that four-letter word: care. Thank you very much.
Thank you for that report. Any comments from the council? Councilmember Bateman? Or were you, you had one more thing to add? I'm sorry.
Just one quick point of information. At some point in the not-too-distant future, Keely and I hope to bring forward an inter-local agreement that memorializes our relationship, the relationship that we have around Code Blue, and brings all of the cities in the county and the county together in a legally binding document that dictates how we will respond to Code Blue in the future. We've had plenty of opportunity now to exercise our plan. We'll continue to refine that plan, but we do look forward to coming forward with an inter-local agreement that memorializes this soon. So thank you.
Thank you. And I know we have on board as well Rich Hoy to talk about our street response, but I think I'll just take a break real quick and see if there's any comments from up here. Councilmember, or Mayor for Tim Bateman?
Thank you. I just want to welcome both of our guests here tonight. I don't think I've met Captain Sterns and Keely. I don't think I've welcomed you in your new position. So welcome to both of you. And I also wanted to say that, Keely, I'm so happy that someone with your direct hands-on experience in that industry, working with people, is in the position that you are now, so you can help us as we move forward. And turning off my microphone. I just, the progress that we've made on the coordination of all these efforts, it couldn't have come at a better time. And so I'm really hoping that all the progress that was made in this work, we can save that for future reference, so we can ask people, you know, when we need help and supplies, we can have that on hand and just put that out. To know that you served and increased how many people you are serving is really, really amazing. I know it took a lot of effort and such a really important time to do it. I didn't know that Inter Transit was offering those free rides for folks, and I also really appreciate you going out into the woods and providing those survival supplies for people that weren't able to actually come into town. And we later on today will be discussing our plan for sea level rise, and as a result of climate change, some of these storm events could be happening more frequently. So it's really great that we were able to learn this now, and we can plan for the future and hopefully replicate this if this does happen again. But just thank you, and thank you to the city staff that were helped, that helped collaborate and do all these activities with you and all the other service providers. So thanks.
Thank you. Councilmember Partially.
A year ago, I was a brand-new city councillor, and I do know the difference between last year and this year. Do we have a long ways to go? Yeah. But you know what? We should take the moment to celebrate what we have accomplished, and I think our response to this Code Blue is one of those examples. And to me, it just, I think we should take a moment of hope, because sometimes it's hard to not lose that when you see the uphill battle we got, and we should celebrate little victories like this. So thank you, and thank everybody who worked on that.
And I'll just add, in closing for this part, that Councilmember Rollins is currently on ocean shores, studying emergency response planning with folks from across the state. And I think this is just a microcosm of emergency response planning at its finest. So thank you for all your efforts. And like Captain Sterns mentioned, that nobody could have guessed that we'd have a storm event like this this year, including Rich Hoy, our Director of Public Works, who, I don't know whether you got much sleep that first week, but I know a lot of your staff are working 24/7, trying to keep our streets safe and passable. So thank you.
Yes, thank you. Good evening, Mayor Selby, members of the council. And for the record, I'm Rich Hoy, Public Works Director. And that was quite a storm. You know, we got, here in the capital city, between 18 and 20 inches of snow, and that's a lot for us here. I would hazard to say that's a significant storm even in the upper Midwest or in New England. And the event for us really began on Friday, February 8th. We went into 24-hour operation, as the mayor mentioned. So we had crews working around the clock. We stayed in 24-hour operation up until Thursday during the day on the 14th. So nearly a full week, our crews were working around the clock on snow and ice response. We have a snow and ice plan that our staff executed, and I think executed well. It's a priority-based plan. It's online for the public to see. But we start with the primary roads in terms of our plowing operations for snow and ice. We also call those our lifeline routes. So these are the routes used by police, fire, EMS, the access to the hospitals and critical medical facilities are really important. We also focus for safety on key hills and bridges to make sure that if they're not safe, we close them, but we work to keep them open. Once those roads are in good shape, then we move on to what we call our secondary roads. They're the collector streets between the arterials. Once they're in good shape, we move to the neighborhood streets. These are the streets that carry more volume within the neighborhoods. And so those are all listed on our plow maps, and we work to get to all those streets. Once all of those are in good shape, then we move into the residential streets. And in most events that we have, the snow doesn't tend to stick around for that long. You know, tends to turn to rain, and it's not often that we're getting into the residential streets, but we did in this event. And I want to thank the council, and I want to thank the public for their patience as we work through trying to get onto all the streets within the community. We have a total of about seven plows, sanders, that we have to deploy across the city, four large plows and three smaller ones. We don't have a lot of snow removal equipment, given that we don't get that much snow, generally speaking, in this part of the country. In downtown, when we get large snow events like this, as you can imagine, it's difficult to find places to put the snow because of the importance of on-street parking. So we have crews that are deployed to actually physically remove snow from downtown. You can see the remnants of the snow piles out by our maintenance center. That was snow that was hauled out of downtown. Our snow and ice plan, as I mentioned, is online. We also have real-time plow maps. You can see where the plows have been within the last hour. You can see real-time whether hills are open or closed. And our communication services staff informed me that we got over 7,000 views on that page during the storm. So I was really pleased that folks were going there to see what the latest status was and learn, you know, where our plows were operating. In addition to snow plowing, as you recall, we had a lot of downed trees around the community. So our crews were out clearing trees off of roadways. We had a lot of power outages. So our crews were, we had power outages at our water and sewer pump stations, a number of them. We were hauling generators around to keep them operational. We also, in the midst of it all, on Monday, when, in the heat of the snow, we had a water main break in the middle of downtown, the Fifth and Columbia. So we had a lot of work going on. And I just want to give a big shout-out to our crews, you know, across in many departments, not just in Public Works. And I just hope you appreciate when I say they work their butts off for the community. They know that when events like this happen, they really need to bring their A-game to help the community get back on their feet. And I just saw their dedication coming out. So all of our crews in transportation, streets and traffic operations, in our utilities, in our fleet operations, keeping all the equipment going. We had our facility staff keep getting our buildings clear of snow. They were also down at the mitigation site downtown, helping with snow removal there. Parks was huge for us. They came and helped us with snow removal downtown and in parking lots. CPND, Parking Services staff were downtown. We also, our urban forestry program with... We also, um, our Urban Forestry Program with Water Resources were out doing a lot of hazard tree assessments. They're still working on that now. Um, and I want to thank, uh, folks in our fire department and in all the departments for the support we got from the Emergency Operations Center. It was really invaluable to us. Lastly, I want to thank the council for your words of support for our crews. They really meant a lot. And, uh, I think we did a lot of things well. In an event like this, there's always opportunities for us to learn and get better, uh, and do it even better next time. And so we're going through what's known as after-action reviews now to learn from what went well and what we can improve upon. And some of you have given us some good suggestions about some things for next time, like we could improve upon, uh, sidewalks around parking lots downtown, or clearing sidewalks on bridges, we could do a better job. We've got some medical facilities we need to make sure we get on our plow maps. We had some new ones that hadn't yet made it onto our plow map. So, we're going through that now. We're also evaluating our equipment. It's getting older, and so we, uh, hope to make some improvements there. Lastly, I'll say, uh, that we're in recovery mode now. We're collecting debris off the side of the roads. We're trying to get the sand up off the roads and clear the bike lanes. Uh, we also, as you know, last weekend, we collected storm debris from the public for City of Olympia residents. We had two sites, one on the west side, one on the east side. We collected from the public thirteen-hundred-and-fifty cubic yards of material over those two days. So, they were well attended. Um, and because of, uh, what we heard from the public and a lot of need expressed for more help with that, we're going to open those up again this weekend, again, for City of Olympia residents. So, we're going to be getting the word out about continuing with that operation one more time this weekend. And so with that, I'll take any questions.
And I just want to also add that the city came together with the Olympia Downtown, uh, Alliance to offer free parking downtown through the end of the month, so through Thursday as a thank you to, uh, folks that were patient with us, and including the downtown business owners and their employees who lost shifts, that we are offering free parking in the two- and three-hour meters, not the nine-hour meters. But anyhow, so that's a little bit of give-back, uh, that the city is giving to our downtown, uh, patrons and, uh, people that, um, have businesses downtown. Anybody else? All right. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right, so that ends item two B. We're on to our public comment period. And, uh, for those of you that have signed up, I'm assuming that you've read the rules around, uh, speaking, um, at public comment. Basically, you have three minutes, and there's a countdown clock over my right shoulder. Uh, we ask that you speak to, uh, city business and that, uh, you do not speak to any upcoming public hearings that we might be holding, uh, in the next forty-five days or have held in the past forty-five days. We do have a, um, sea level rise management plan that's a public hearing tonight. So, if you want to speak to that, you have to wait. Um, and then upcoming, we have March fifth, the public hearing on an ordinance adjusting the multifamily tax exemption area boundaries. So, we have, uh, about eleven people, uh, signed up, so I think we can get through in our first thirty minutes. Um, I will call out two to three names in advance so you can stage yourself up by the podium. So, we'll start with Jerry Durker, followed by Esther Cronenberg, followed by Jim Reeves.
Hello. My name's Jerry Durker. I live at twenty-eight, twenty-six Cooper Point Road Northwest, Olympia, Washington, nine-eight-five-oh-two. Uh, I'm here, uh, talking about, uh, a problem that, uh, apparently the, the city, uh, has not made a stormwater plan and doesn't have plans for the stormwater facilities along Twenty-Eighth Avenue and Cooper Point and, uh, mo- apparently most of the area that was annexed in two thousand and five. Uh, we found, I found this out here this last year, and, uh, talked to a couple of the city people about that. And, uh, I've also found that the county doesn't have a, a stormwater plan for, uh, the area just outside of that, too, uh, from Kevin Hanson, uh, the, the county's hydrologist. So, I would suggest that, uh, since the Green Cove Creek Basin area is a jointly, uh, done area here, but, but by both the city and the county, and both their comprehensive plans, and as, uh, part of that, you're supposed to c- conference back and forth. I think you guys should get together so you could actually get a, a plan for that area because, uh, the stormwater facilities along Twenty-Eighth Avenue and stuff hadn't been, uh, cleaned out in, uh, more than a decade and stuff. And I got it done la- this last year, uh, because of this. Uh, and they had to actually figure out where the, the, the stuff was because they still don't have, uh, the actual plans for where those culverts and stuff are on Twenty-Eighth Avenue and stuff. And thanks. So, uh, I would suggest that you guys do that. And just, uh, and I want to thank Keith Daly for coming up and, uh, giving, uh, that clarification on that project, uh, thing, too. Uh, I, I do, uh, have one caveat on that is, uh, or two caveats on that. One is that, uh, while I'm a, a, a known interested party and, uh, according to the stormwater report, they've been dumping stormwater from that site on, uh, through my pond and stuff for years, uh, and stuff, then, uh, I, I should have been given notice of this fact. And I've been, uh, like I said, commenting on this, uh, this project and things about this project for about six years now, uh, and stuff. And so this is something I should have been one of the known interested parties that should have been given in- uh, notice. Plus, I talked to Mark Cost- Coster of the, uh, Thurston County, uh, Public Health Department, and he said that, uh, that, that he had sent a letter to them, to, uh, everyone about this project in two, uh, two thousand and fifteen, November two thousand and fifteen. And on the bottom of it, it, it said that it, he wanted notice, too, and he didn't receive notice either. And a number of others people that had interest and have commented before didn't get received notice. So, that's one of the reasons why we were asking for an extended comment period, et cetera, about that. That, and the, the records weren't available until just this Friday.
Thank you. Thank you. Esther Cronenberg, followed by Jim Reeves, followed by Jeremy Scott.
Hi, I'm Esther Cronenberg. I live about a mile and a half downstream from the proposed Green Cove Park project. Uh, my well is on the creek, and I own a house in Olympia on Schneider Creek. I'm here to submit petitions from concerned citizens, asking the city to extend the comment period. Thank you for doing that, and also to encourage you to do thorough testing on this site. I'm also an active member of the League of Women Voters of Thurston County. This year is part of the water study team, updating our two thousand and eight study. I've had the opportunity to listen to, collaborate and connect to current and former employees of DOE and Thurston Regional Planning Council, county staff, tribal members, and a wide array of environmental groups and community members. And I've learned quite a lot about the real threats facing the quantity and quality of our water resources. We're hosting a series of public forums called Where's the Water? The next one's March fifth at the Olympia Center. I hope you can come. Last year, I did an educational project for the league consisting of a series of forty-four portraits of residents expressing their particular concerns on the environment, a majority of which were about water. One of the first people I met was my neighbor Jim Elliott, who grew up on the site in question in the thirties, and here's his picture. I took this about a year before he passed, and he's the person who sold the property to Mr. Sundberg, who opened the gravel mine there. And then he says, "My well ran dry when pumps for a new development in Olympia were started up." It shows how interconnected all the groundwater aquifers are, and that what happens at one site has an impact miles away. What I found even more chilling was his personal eyewitness testimony of the history of that site and its legacy of use as a toxic waste dump by Cascade Pole Company and the Port of Olympia, and his personal fight to prevent the colossal irreversible mistake of allowing anyone to live there in its present condition. So, I was very concerned when I learned a proposal for a hundred-and-eighty-one houses is being considered, first for the babies and families who've lived there, then for all of us who depend on this aquifer for our drinking water, and then for the health of the Green Cove Creek ecosystem, whose nineteen-ninety-eight comprehensive plan cites stormwater runoff as a number-one threat to its viability. Uh, the thousand pages of technical data which are on the website appear to be insufficient. I'm not an engineer. I don't know how enough to digest that data. But I taught special education preschoolers for twenty-five years, some of whom had birth defects from environmental toxins. So, what I do know is that it's unconscionable to push this project through without thorough and definitive testing that proves without any doubt that this site is safe to put young families on, that it will not contaminate the aquifer that serves thousands of people, and that it will not forever degrade the Green Cove Basin. Thank you for extending the comment period.
Thank you. Moses, followed by Jeremy Scott, followed by Judith, Judith de Silva.
Yes, uh, my name is Jim Reeves. I'm also known as Moses. And, uh, for his public safety of this state, this town, the biggest threat to that public safety is a coming big earthquake, which scientists say will happen. They just don't know which year. But, uh, there are other sources of information that seem to have shed some light on the coming earthquake and when. That was the death of Elvis Presley, when he died in his washroom. He seemed to be acting out a big earthquakes and, uh, volcanic mountain eruption scenario when he died, and then leaving that message for Washington State, Washroom, Washington State. And, uh, you can interpret some numbers related to Elvis Presley's death, the year, and his age, which points to the year two thousand and nineteen as the year when the big earthquake would hit Washington State. Also, I, I just had a thought about, uh, biblical information that seems to have something to say about an earthquake in Washington State. Uh, as you know, in the Bible, there was this city called Jerusalem. And in the spelling of the word Jerusalem, in the center is the letter sequence, U-S-A. And, uh, that can be interpreted as applying to the United States of America. And in the West Wall of Jerusalem was where Jesus Christ was crucified. We're on the West Wall of the United States of America. And we're, and that, uh, Jesus was crucified at the gate in the West Wall. And we're at the gate in the West Wall of the United States of America. And the crosses that the people were crucified on, including Jesus Christ there at the West Wall Gate of Jerusalem, could be interpreted as a forest of trees. And we have a forest of trees. And Jesus was pierced at his side with his Roman spear, and he died. And you can interpret, uh, the shape of Vancouver Island as a very large spear, and it's pointed directly at to the county of King County, and Jesus was the king. So, uh, during the crucifixion of Jesus Christ, he died, and there occurred a very large earthquake that rent the rocks of the temple. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Jeremy Scott, followed by Judith de Silva, followed by Joseph de Silva.
Good evening, Mayor, councilmembers. I'm here tonight, uh, to express, uh, gratitude for the council, City of Olympia, for giving us a position to be in the lot that we are, the smart lot. Excuse me, I'm kind of horse-sick, been doing a lot of things. We want to thank you from the bottom of our heart, the community does. We had a, a situation. We had a calling. We called the community to help us clean up Ten City on Sunday. Me, uh, mainly by myself, two days, I was already cleaning up. Think about it is, uh, we're all together on this one. If everybody that was talking tonight, one thing I got out of all, everybody's conversations was we did it together. We're a community. Tonight's the night where I can say Olympia's getting back to Olympia pride because we're doing it all together. I want to thank some of the councilmembers that came down and met with us when they could have been with their family. Thank you, Lisa. Thank you, Nathaniel. Sorry we didn't get together, Mr. Gilman. But, uh, today is the day that the people spoke. Uh, they had a situation where there was filth around them. Uh, I got them together like, uh, I felt like, uh, Sergeant Slaughter off Homer Pyle. Come on, let's go, let's go, let's go! We can do it, we can do it! And you know what? We all came together. And all the volunteers, just housing, the community, they responded huge with donations, clothes, shovels, gloves, and their time. So, I say, if we can do this one time, we can do this a million more times and do it together. And so again, like I said, when we did this smart lot to clean up, we wanted to let the officials know in the City of Olympia that we really appreciate you guys and that today is, uh, it's Olympia pride. We did this all together. I thank you guys for your time and support. Thank you.
Thank you. Judith de Silva, followed by Joseph de Silva, followed by Regan Unsold.
Hi, my name is Judith de Silva, and I live near the project that's called the Green Cove Park. And, um, we have a well, and it's also really an area surrounded by wetlands, so that, um, that area that, and I just found out about this, so I'm pretty new to it, but what's happened is, it turns out that in looking at it, and I've talked to an ecologist, and I've talked to attorneys about this, and what's happened is that the, the project that's proposed is on what appears to be, and what people have stated is, an unpermitted and unregulated open-pit dump site. So, the toxins from it, um, not only are concerning if you were to build something on it, but are concerning for the whole watershed. And the, the problem there is that we have basically that whole mound, it's on really kind of a top of the hill, if you've been out there on Cooper Point Road. And the problem is it's surrounded by wetlands. And when you, when you have that level of toxins and the runoff is going into the protected area of Green Cove and into the waterways and into the sound, irrespective of development, that site needs to be cleaned up. That site is a hazard to not only people's wells, but to the, the environment, the community. It's, it's really dangerous to think that it's left like that. And I know this happens a lot with open pit and unregulated things, but to just build on it, and, and I think for me, a big concern is, I'm really into transparency and open government, so for me, a big concern is this feels very railroaded through. And the reason it feels that way is the, the materials were posted, what seemed to be thousands of pages, but many, many pages, we tried to read through them, on Friday. We're supposed to comment by Monday. And while I appreciate what Keith Daly was saying, it, it turns out, and I've talked to attorneys about this, that if you wait till the hearing examiner's doing it and then try to appeal to Superior Court, number one, only one of those has ever been changed after the hearing examiner. We don't have the time to wait until that time when we get to, to speak then. It costs over fifty thousand dollars in attorney's fees to do it. It's unpractical, it's unfair to the community, it's unfair to the transparency that we don't know that whole process of, once the permit's been issued, we're done. Once this Friday comes, we appear to be done because we can't wait until the hearing examiner's time. So, in the name of having, number one, I'm pretty shocked that this level of toxicity would just be running off into the wetlands and the, and the fish, the salmon, the sound. So, I think you, I would really encourage you not to let this just get pushed through. I know there's a huge demand for housing. I would like to see a lot of housing in this community, but it's really important not to destroy the environment while you do that, and it's really important to take a good look. So, I'd like to see what the ecologists have wanted, which is to really get an environmental impact statement here and to give us another ninety days, not to end us this Friday, um, because by the time we wait for the next ninety days with the hearing examiner, we will have no ability unless we pay more than fifteen thousand.
Thank you. Thank you. Joseph de Silva, followed by Regan Unsold.
Hi, I'm also going to talk about a little bit of my understanding of the Green Cove Project, which is also new to me. Whatever the process is for the city to approve the project, whoever makes that decision, it's a big decision for the city. It potentially could mean that we will have a hundred-and-eighty, uh, new homes, which the city could really use because there's lots of pressure on housing. Lots of people are coming into Olympia from, um, California and other communities. Real estate prices have been going up because of that, and it would be nice to provide those people with some homes and maybe slow down the price increases somewhat. Uh, I'm all for development. One problem, though, is if the city, through whatever means, approves the project, and then it turns out that, um, the, um, the methane from the, from the, uh, debris that's decomposing, that's been plowed over, over the years, and is down twenty feet, um, as that's leaks into people's houses and causes poisoning of the people and maybe fires and buildings to collapse and roads to collapse. That all becomes the city's problem because the city has approved it. So, be careful and try and look at what's going on. I know that the developer is aware that the area that they want to build on is not, um, untouched soil. They're building on top of lots of fill because they say in their plans that they want to put the houses on pin piles. they want to put the houses on pin piles to stop the houses from sinking. I'm not sure that that's an approved building process, but if they can get it through, that's great. But the roads are not going to be able to be put on pin piles, and the roads will probably start collapsing if the debris under the road starts decaying and giving way, and it becomes the city's responsibility to deal with that. This could bankrupt the city if it turns out to be a nightmare situation, that it wasn't looked at carefully. So I just think you should make sure that whoever's looking at this looks at it carefully. Thanks very much.
Thank you. Regan Unsold, followed by Lee Reiner, followed by Rachel Da Silva.
Thank you. Regan Unsold, I live in northeastern Olympia, longtime resident. And I wanted to kind of pick up on what Jeremy was saying about Smart Lot. Back in May, this council unanimously adopted Resolution M. 1942, that committed us to exploring a path rooted in humility, rooted in compassion, learning about homelessness, especially as it relates to trauma-informed care and harm reduction. And I will say that as someone in the chamber that night, I had goosebumps, because that's the kind of commitment, that's the kind of spirit, that's the kind of coming from the soul, that I want to be associated, I want to see my community reflect and manifest. And that was in May. And yet, the camp sweeps continued, with one notable exception, that was the small camp over on Wheeler, the night that you also unanimously adopted the Declaration of Public Health Emergency, which coincided with the planned removal of a small camp over on Wheeler Avenue, Nickerson. And the council, I think, aware of the contradictory images of declaring a public health emergency on one hand, while your other hand was causing this camp to be involuntarily removed, and so there was a stay put on that removal. And that stay continues to exist today. And the residents at that camp meet weekly now with their faith community partners and others who have stepped up, built relationships with people in the camp, with members of at least two faith communities. That's the kind of solution that we want to see here in Olympia. And so, a week ago, Sunday, I think it was, Lisa and Nathaniel responded to an invitation from Jeremy and others in the camp to come down and meet people. They were down there for over an hour, and I met for another hour and a half with people in the camp afterwards. And many of them marvel that this is the first time that we've felt that we've been seen as a human being, as someone who could be part of a solution, and not just a blight on the community, because that's also a powerful message. And so, that group put together an ask and an offer, and the ask is that the city find a way to convene a work group of camp residents, area businesses that have very legitimate concerns about the presence of that camp, other parties, and figure out what might we be able to do to make that at least acceptable enough until we can find a planned alternative for all residents of the camp.
Thank you. Lee, and I know, is it Reimer or Reiner?
Yeah. Judith, thank you so much. I want to thank everyone here tonight, because the reason we're here is because we love Olympia with all our hearts. Many of us have lived in Olympia for over 30 years. Many of us have spent a lot of time on these huge issues that the city is confronting now. And the reason I'm here tonight is because of Green Cove Park, and I do have several pages of signatures of individuals from the neighborhood who are concerned that Keith Daly said, I believe he said tonight, that he would give us 60 days comment period. I think that's what he said. That's what I heard, perhaps I'm wrong, but I'm hoping that Keith and his department will give the Neighborhood Association a written, a letter to that effect, so that we know exactly when that cutoff date for comments would be closing. As you've heard from many neighbors tonight, some of them have planned to go forward with more sampling at this former Sundberg Open Pit Dump, there on the corner of Cooper Point, near 20th or Elliott Street. One of my neighbors, Diana Elliott, the daughter of Mr. Elliott, Jim Elliott, who Elliott Street was named after, and now of course it's 20th Street, essentially told me, the other day, she was a child when her father brought the poles from the log yard here at Port of Olympia, and took them up to that hill behind our homes. And she says, as a child, of course, it was forested area, and it had been cleared, and they were dumping these creosated logs into the valleys, into the ravines, and then bringing these huge tractors and covering it over with dirt. So she and her father, let's face it, want to testify, or did testify, Janine Gates had this testimony two years ago, and published it in her little Hollywood publication, anyway, that we do have organic material deep into these ravines, as was cited, the city roadways would go over these ravines that are covered with creosated logs. Off this site, we are having creeks and runoff into the wetlands that are going into the wells of all these people around who have wells, they're not on city water. And if you may remember, the city went through this not too many decades ago, when the contaminated water from people's wells got contaminated from other projects, and the city had to step in and provide city water to all those who are on wells, and because your water had been contaminated because of an error by the city. So my concern is, please don't rush into this. I've attended planning meetings, they're chaotic, I have no respect for what's going on in the planning meetings, and I suggest we look at this closely. Thank you.
Thank you. Rachel Da Silva, followed by Robert Barnes.
Yes, good evening, thank you very much. This is my first time here, and I just learned about the Green Cove Park project about 48 hours ago, so I've been trying to put my quick study hat on. My name's Rachel Da Silva, I do live in the watershed area on Crestline Drive, and I will be purchasing property over just off of Cooper Point in the next month or so. So I got extremely concerned when I first heard about this development. I don't have any specifics to add really to the other comments that were made tonight, but a person that I know who's a restoration ecologist, NOAA employee, and a estuary and habitat restoration expert, has written a several-page document, which I'm sure he will contribute to the discussion before the next hearing. And in that, he makes really scary points, and one of them, a number of them, are based on the developer's preliminary plan. And those are fall into the two categories that you've heard a lot about tonight already, the fill on the surface, and how the developer is imagining they can build, you know, decent housing on, right on top of fill, and then also the stormwater issue, the runoff, not only the runoff from these additional 180 homes, but the potentially affected, toxic affected runoff that is going to be generated by all the, well, all the construction in the process of building 180 homes. So I guess, you know, the point that there's so much work done in development now, low-income development, I believe, was the plan in the 1998 Green Cove Development Plan, as the best, cited as the best way to move forward, knowing that we humans always need more housing. This development, from what, the little that I know so far, and I urge you to get into the weeds in it, as I'm sure you will, this is not a low-income, a low-density, low-impact and low-density housing development. It doesn't have the remediation aspects of low-impact development in terms of stormwater and the hydrology as it's currently envisioned. So I would thank you for your deep attention to this potential disaster on the west side. Thank you.
Thank you. Robert Barnes, followed by Gabby Wu.
Good evening, Mayor Shelby and council members. My name's Robert Barnes, and I live out on Cooper Point, out on 59th Avenue Northwest, so a little bit further out on the point. But this project, the Green Cove Park Development Proposal, definitely got my attention. I had no idea. I've lived in this community for about 35 years, I've driven past that site at Sundberg for over 30 years, never realizing that there was that level of contamination. I was astounded. I'm on the board of the South Puget Sound Salmon Enhancement Group, so I'm very concerned about water quality and the effects of water quality on both Eld Inlet, Bud Inlet, and the whole Salish Sea. We definitely have our work cut out for us to protect our water resources, and certainly this site should be investigated. I'm really concerned about the level of contamination that was brought to our attention. I think there needs to be a thorough investigation and evaluation of that site. I'm recommending that the comment period be extended. It's really the mission of both the city, as well as Thurston County, to protect the health, safety, and welfare of our citizens. And I implore you to extend that comment period, do the due diligence of investigating that site. It's up to all of us to protect our quality of life, and I implore you to do that. So, anyway, thanks, thanks for your time.
Thank you. Gabby Wu? Gabby Wu? All right, that concludes our public comment period for this evening. We've heard from everybody that signed up. Do I have any questions or comments from the dais? Councilmember Gilman?
I just want to appreciate everybody who's come and offered comment, it really helps my thinking a lot, and I appreciate that. And I wanted to ask if Keith Daly might reiterate the sequence of the neighborhood meeting this week, the public comment period, the path to that public hearing, and then when the hearing examiner would come after that.
And can I piggyback on that? And then can you give just a very high-level overview of what a SEPA analysis would include?
Sure. Thank you, Madam Mayor, Members of Council, Keith Daly, Community Planning and Development Director, here again, briefly commenting about the Green Cove Park project. This project was, again, the application was provided to us in January. It will go forward to a neighborhood meeting this coming Thursday. Following the neighborhood meeting, staff will start getting into the application in some detail, and at some point, over, let's say, the next 30 days, staff will issue a SEPA determination, the State Environmental Policy Act determination, and will publish that, and will say whether or not there is a notice of determination or not, determination of significance or not. Parties will have an opportunity to review that determination, and if they feel that staff has erred in some way, they can appeal that. That appeal would go to the hearing examiner. Absent an appeal, then a public hearing with the hearing examiner would be scheduled at some point in the future, again, after all of the reports have been satisfactorily reviewed, after there's agreement among the development professionals and the city staff, and our consultant team has reviewed all the materials, and we're ready to move forward to a public hearing. The hearing examiner holds a public hearing and takes testimony on the project. The testimony includes both the people that show up at the meeting and the people that have commented up to the point of the meeting. Oftentimes, the hearing examiner will leave the record open for some period of time following the hearing, so that people can follow up with questions or comments based on the information that they hear at the hearing. Ultimately, the record is closed, and the hearing examiner then takes all of the information that's received, both the public comment, the technical reports, the staff report, the SEPA determination, and everything that's in the record, and makes a decision. And the decision is based on the record. He issues that decision, and people have an opportunity to appeal that again to the Superior Court, and it is an on-the-record appeal. It is based on the record. So it is important for people to participate in this process, but I would again reiterate that people can participate up to and including the public hearing. If you are not a party at the public hearing, your ability to participate in an appeal to the Superior Court may be impacted. I don't know, I'd have to ask our council about that, but certainly, the hearing examiner will take any public comment up until the time the record is closed. And at this point, we don't know when that is going to be. I said 60 days, it could be 90 days, it could be 120 days. It potentially could not happen, you know, that also happens. People get into the process, and they say, wow, this was different than I thought it was going to be, and they withdraw their application. Not contending that that's going to happen here, but that, it certainly is not, it's within the realm of possibility. So there's a range for you. Sorry, I'm not able to provide more specifics here. Those specifics will emerge. Again, if people comment, anybody that sends us an email becomes a party of interest, and we send them notice. It was indicated earlier that people didn't receive notice, that's probably because we're starting a new party of record and parties of interest here. But I'll make sure that we get that, that anybody that came this evening will become part of those parties of interest going forward.
Actually, I'm so sorry, you can talk with Keith after.
I'll be happy to answer.
He can answer some questions.
Questions afterwards, thanks.
So I have Councilmember Jones, did you have any further questions?
I do, for Keith.
Do you mind standing up there again, Keith?
Sure. Two, if you don't mind. The first one, what is our normal process for notifying folks in advance of the neighborhood meeting? And was that followed in this process? And then number two, some of the comment we received tonight was that some folks think that it's more beneficial to make comment early, prior to that neighborhood meeting, rather than being a part of the hearing examiner process. Is there any better position to be in, if you have one opinion or another, in this process?
I don't believe that there's any better position to be in. Certainly, early notification corresponding to staff early on lets us know what the issues of concern are, lets us aggregate those into a cogent response to the hearing examiner, so that we can help to catalog and categorize that input. But no, the hearing examiner will take all the testimony, regardless of when it's received, whether it's received today or at the hearing, and will consider that as part of his determination and deliberation on the project.
And then the first question had to do with the notification prior to the neighborhood meeting.
So I wasn't.
Did we follow a standard process?
Yes, of course, of course we do. We notice all people within a radius, 500-foot radius of the subject property, we notice all of the neighborhood associations within the area as well. Again, the only thing that I'm not sure, standing up here at the mic this evening, is whether or not we have started a is whether or not we have started a party of record notice, or as a result of this being a new application, we're starting a new parties of record. As Mr. Durkier indicated, this project has been in front of the City of Olympia on numerous occasions, so there's been numerous parties of record lists generated over the course of the last several years. The applicant actually came forward with this application two years ago and decided to withdraw their application and come forward under the new stormwater standards. So, again, I'm not sure how we've, whether we've carried that party of record list forward or not, and I'll confirm that tomorrow.
Thank you.
Right. Councilmember Partially, did you have any questions for Keith?
It's more of a clarification for the public, too. Could you give people a link to what is involved on our website for a SEPA evaluation? Or give us a 60,000-foot information on this for the people in the audience that are concerned about this?
SEPA determinations and SEPA evaluations are pretty basic environmental reviews. They're basically categorizing a series of documentation. They're not making a decision. It's basically, is this documentation there and present? The decision is made at points later. We actually get into the review of the stormwater, or the traffic, or environmental issues, or whatever the case may be, whatever particular issue it is. We get into the details later in the review process. At this point in time, we're just simply checking to see whether or not the information's there, and have they considered this particular issue. Then, later in the process, we get into the particulars of the report and the actual evaluation and conformance to our rules, regulations, and criteria.
All right, I have one more. And then, oh, you want to go first, Councilmember Cooper? Just regarding the low-impact development standards that were recently adopted by the council, those would be put as an overlay for this project?
Certainly. Any standards relevant to this project will be applied to the property. So, if there are regulations in place today, those regulations will serve as the basis for the review of the project. And as I indicated, they actually withdrew their application and submitted a new application so that they would be under the latest set of regulations that we have in place. So, whatever we have on the books as of January 23rd, when they made their application, is what will apply to the project going forward. And of course, the hearing examiner uses the regulations as a staff to determine whether or not the project does or doesn't comply, and whether or not it will or will not receive a permit, or if there are specific conditions that are required, like dealing with toxic contamination, for example, that need to be addressed.
Councilmember Cooper?
Thank you, Mayor Selby. I'm glad your last line was toxic contamination, because that's where my question lies. So, within the, so, what, would the SEPA process trigger a Phase II environmental in the site regardless of what the Phase I says? And if not, where does the city's ability lie in possibly being able to investigate more around the possible existence of hazardous materials adjacent to or in groundwater, lacking anything other than local legend and hearsay saying that that might be possible?
Well, I guess my short answer to that is, I'm not sure. That's definitely something that we're going to have to take a close look at. The information, the story that exists on this property certainly is one that makes one question, what happened? What was buried? What are the implications of those materials? Is there contamination associated with them? Those questions will be reviewed as part of this development application. I'm not sure what exactly, how those questions will be identified and how answers will be developed, whether a Phase II environmental assessment will be required as part of this. I'm not sure. That would be unique, but it may be what is required to get the answers that are necessary to move this project forward.
Okay. And then, last piece of that question is, are we, at this point, aware of any previous landowners receiving a determination of non-significance from the Department of Ecology for the site?
No.
Okay.
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Are we good for now? Thank you, Keith.
You're welcome. Thank you.
And thanks, everyone, for coming in. We always learn a lot from our constituents. So, we're going to move on to our consent calendar tonight. I need a motion to approve. Some moved. Second. Any questions, comments, or polls? Mayor Protem Bateman, and then followed by Councilmember Gilman?
Thank you, Mayor Selby. I would like to pull item 4G for further action.
All right. Councilmember Gilman?
Did you say 4G, the Yakima jail?
Yeah.
Same one I wanted to ask a little about.
Okay. So, we, Councilmember Bateman asked to pull it for further action, future action, not tonight. Am I correct in that? Yes. So, it sounds like we're still waiting on some clarification around that contract? Is that what I'm understanding? That we look to get some more information before we make any approval on that? All right. Any other questions, comments, or polls? All right. So, I have a motion and a second to approve minus item 4G, tonight's consent calendar. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Consent calendar is approved minus item 4G. That takes us to, we have no new business tonight. We have a public hearing, though it's item 5A, and I would like to invite Andy Hob, our Water Resources Director, who just has a new bounce in his step these days. I don't know what's going on, but I heard a rumor. Heard a rumor, we might be losing you.
It could be true.
Oh, my goodness, I'm in denial. Don't you need council approval to retire? All right. So, I'll let you give the background and analysis of what we're going to open our public hearing.
Certainly. Thank you, and good evening. I'm Andy Hob with Olympia's Public Works Department. And joining me this evening are Susan Clark and Eric Christensen, also with Public Works and also key members of the project team. The public hearing tonight provides an opportunity for the community to comment on the city's draft sea level rise response plan. The plan has been available for review since early December. And between that time, early December and late January, when we last briefed you on this topic, we received about 15 comments. We shared those with you at that time, but we will bring them to you again in the weeks or months to come. More recently, several weeks ago, we issued the SEPA determination, non-project determination for the plan. That review period for SEPA closes tomorrow afternoon. It's then followed by the potential for a one-week appeal period. So, after next week, we can revise the plan. We have a number of minor edits, clarifications, revisions that we propose making to it, and then we intend to bring it back to you in the month of March for your further consideration. So, tonight is just a public hearing. I know you followed this planning process over the last year and a half, and were recently briefed, so I'll keep this evening's presentation brief, maybe 10 minutes. Our work as a city on both climate change and sea rise began in the early 1990s. Still, meaningful work on sea level rise planning is new to our community, as it is new to most every municipality or county in the country. Fortunately, we've been at it a while, as I suggest, and we've collected a lot of technical information that the plan then builds upon and that we've been able to use. As part of this process, we've developed some new relationships with the port, lot, and many others focused on common threats of flooding in our downtown area. We've spent quite a bit of time, six or eight months, defining downtown. What is downtown? Its built structure, its critical services, its community amenities, and the potential impact that flooding could have on those various attributes of downtown. It's also an unusual plan in that the timeframe is very long. We're looking out to the year 2100, the end of the century. And inherent in any climate change work, we're dealing with a fair amount of scientific But with that said, the plan is pretty straightforward. The first chapter spends a fair amount of time discussing our goals, our objectives of the plan, assumptions, guiding principles, and then the planning process itself. It then moves into a brief chapter that discusses the public process, public engagement, and outreach that we've hosted over the last year and a half. On a more technical note, the plan evolves into looking at the vulnerability and risks of flooding downtown, some level of detail, and then moves on into our approach to adaptation, the specific strategies that we could employ to manage those risks. Strategies are both infrastructure-related, they're physical, they're operational, as well as governance and policy. The tail end of the plan has several chapters on implementation and next steps, as well as the importance of monitoring and making sure that we're adaptable in the decades ahead as things change. As we've highlighted, and I'll just once again do it briefly, we've highlighted in all our discussions and in the plan, we're looking at fairly substantial amounts of sea rise. Mid-range projections are up to 36 inches by the end of the century. We're actually planning and preparing for 68 inches, which is a lower probability, higher-risk level of sea rise. We've also discussed in the plans and during our discussions, not only the future vulnerability of our downtown to flooding, but also its current floodability, flooding. We have a history of flooding downtown. Every winter, December, January, we are very astute about what the river and Bud Inlet are doing. We prepare, and we manage that flooding risk. So, even, as depicted here, six inches or 12 inches of sea rise could have significant implications to the services downtown provides. But with that said, we also have some good cards in our hand. There's a few factors that help us immensely compared to many other communities. The vast majority of our shoreline is in public ownership, and therefore, we have some control or authority to work with it. We've been at this a while. We have a history of working on this topic, and maybe partly as a result of that, our community has been very engaged in this process, and I suspect will continue to be engaged. We can, and I guess we should, expect to phase this in over time. We're fortunate in that, in the first five years, we have a number of relatively simple, small, and expensive infrastructure projects we can work on while we work together with many others, agencies and others in the community, to build the necessary governance structures and the financial tools that we need to put in place so that we can deal with midterm and long-term needs. But we have some breathing room here. We need to be proactive. We need to focus and keep busy on this. But we really do have, you know, have a good five years where we can set the stage to do what we need to do in the long term. With that said, we're really focusing the importance of governance. We brokered that into categories. It's critical that we set up these structures. They are discussed in more detail in Chapter 7, and some fairly specific work efforts that we feel we need to engage in. We also have the opportunity, I think we have the need, to, as we respond proactively, we keep in mind how we will be making decisions about this. The plan discusses it. It talks about the many factors and the emerging information that we'll need to work with. We know our knowledge about this topic and how we respond, and even how downtown changes will happen. It's inevitable. We need to set up a decision-making structure that is adaptable to things, maybe things that we haven't even perceived now, that will be changing. So, it's important for us to continue working to refine this process of monitoring and implementation and decision-making. So, I mentioned we have comments. We've had 15 by the end of January. I put four more comments in your packets on your desk that we've received just in the last couple of weeks, or even this afternoon. In general, the commenters, I feel, acknowledge the need and the importance of the plan. Many of the comments suggest that continued work is needed, and we agree. We received comments that the projections for sea rise may be too high or too low. I guess most of the comments suggest that our projections are too low, but it plays on both sides of the tables. Comments that the costs could be too low. Folks have emphasized the importance of continued coordination and collaboration, as well as public outreach and education. There's been many technical questions that we don't know the answers to now, things like how will groundwater respond underneath downtown, and how could contaminants potentially move with increasing groundwater, things that are on our list to further investigate. We've had many comments about looking at floodable landscapes or softer shorelines, what's known as living shorelines. Of course, that would be part of our designs in the years ahead. We've done some of that work. You can see some along Percival Landing. You can see some out on the port peninsula. But that is a strong community request or recommendation that we incorporate. And then, of course, concerns about the long-term effectiveness or sustainability of these plans, and what happens even beyond 2100 with respect to climate change and sea rise. So, it's a quick overview. I can answer questions. We'll turn it back to you.
All right. Any questions before we open our public hearing? All right. Well, I've got one person signed up, but I will open it up to any other folks in the audience that would like to be part of the public hearing. It has about the same rules as our public comment period in that we have a three-minute countdown clock over my right shoulder. And at this point, I will open a public hearing to gather additional comments on the draft Olympia Sea Level Rise Response Plan. I'd like to first invite Janet Jordan.
Good evening. I have a brief comment on the conservative, conservative estimates used in Olympia's sea level rise planning. I'm one of those people who thinks the estimate is too low. And I've seen a comment that it's fine because it's a conservative number. Conservative usually means safe. If you use a conservative estimate of profit, you won't overestimate how much you have to spend, and you'll stay within a safe margin. In the case of Olympia, it only means small, though. A small estimate of risk leads you to feel safe even when doing something risky. A small estimate of risk leads you to feel safe even when doing something risky. Accepting a sea level rise of only 68 inches by 2100, when there are many indications of possibly much larger rise, is risky and even foolhardy behavior, the opposite of conservative.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to be part of the public hearing tonight? Come forward to introduce yourself.
Good evening, I'm Bob Jacobs. I live at 720 Governor Stevens, and I would have signed in except the sheet was taken so quickly and efficiently. By the time I got here, it was gone. I am here to read a comment from Friends of the Waterfront this evening. Friends of the Waterfront is a nonprofit corporation registered with Washington Secretary of State's Corporations Division. Our official purpose is as follows, quote, "Friends of the Waterfront is a group of Olympia area residents and businesspeople who see the waterfront as a treasure, a central feature that is vital to the health of the whole community. We advocate managing the shoreline and adjacent lands wisely, and developing them for the community's greatest net benefit over the long term, as determined through an inclusive visioning process," end quote. Much of our advocacy has focused on assuring that buildings are set back far enough from the water's edge for quality public access, and also for the use of adjacent businesses, such as restaurants. We are pleased that this draft plan recognizes the importance of Olympia's waterfront area to our quality of life. We are pleased that the draft plan includes recommendations to preserve public access to the waterfront by appropriately modifying the Billy Frank Jr. Trail, Percival Landing, and the Heritage Park lakefront walkway to accommodate sea level rise. We are also pleased that there is some mention of increasing public access in the form of Strategy PL 6, which calls for the Olympia Parks Department to pursue the acquisition of DNR waterfront leases if and when they should become available. We recommend that a statement be added indicating a clear commitment by the city and Port District to maintain public access to the waterfront, and to appropriately improve and expand access in every phase of sea level rise response, planning, and construction. By planning and constructing public access facilities and sea level rise facilities simultaneously, better public access can be achieved at a far lower cost than by separate projects." The public art projects come to mind, that's the way they're handled. "We also recommend that the final plan recognize that our population is expected to more than double during the period of the plan, and that this population increase implies a greater need for waterfront access. We look forward to participating in future processes, centering on the update of the Shoreline Master Program that this draft mentions will be starting soon." I have a couple of copies of this that I'll hand to staff. I also emailed good, clean copies, as the email attachments this afternoon, to Andy and Paul Simmons and Susan Grisham, so they'll have good copies.
Thank you, and we all have a copy ourselves as well. It was printed out for us, thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to be a part of the public hearing this evening? Is there anybody else that would like to speak tonight regarding our draft response plan? I will close the public hearing, and I want to note that the record will be held open until March 5th. That's next Tuesday. So if somebody's watching, I know a lot of people are watching out there in TV land, you can still submit comments on our website. Thank you. So that takes us to council reports, and I, for the mayor's report, that was already given earlier tonight when we did all of our storm update and Code Blue reporting. So I will move to our council reports, and I'll go to Councilmember Cooper.
Thank you, Mayor Selby. Pardon me, I'm reeling from the trauma of hearing that we're going to start the Shoreline Master Plan soon, so just need to breathe for a second. So just a quick thing, Finance Committee met last week. We looked at the long-term capital needs of the city through 2028. Our staff have done a really good job laying out for us a spreadsheet of all of those capital needs, everything from parks to utilities to general funds. That bottom line dollar figure is $330 million. We also have a spreadsheet now in front of Finance Committee where we're looking at all of our debt, and when it sunsets, and when debt service funds will be available. We also have asked staff to have long-term capital needs be on the Finance Committee's agenda monthly for the time being, particularly so that we can be ready to respond to a possible ballot measure by Thurston County around a new courthouse in our downtown, and the needs for us to come up with the financing for somewhere between 20 and 30 million, 35 million, give or take dollars in that project. So more to come on that. And then also, we began a conversation in response to a referral from Councilmember Jones last year, looking at the need for process for the community to go through to determine whether there should be a recommendation to the City Council to establish an Olympia area minimum wage in our city. And so the, I will just say that the beginning of that conversation, I think for folks in the community that are listening to this, was very, very specific to process, and the, I think the outcome is to continue to have a conversation about what a data-driven process looks like, making sure that we can hear from all sides of the story, but also a real interest in the Finance Committee in using this as an opportunity to establish a broader understanding of what small business means in Olympia, and get some more information from our small businesses as sort of a scorecard for what operations look like for them, and within the breadth and depth of services the city provides, where else we might be looking to participate in some sort of collaborations with small business. So it was a great meeting, and I just tell anyone that's nervous or anxious about that conversation that it's going to be slow, and we have some time to really do some learning. And really, the Finance Committee can't launch any process without bringing some sort of recommendation back to the full council, because I don't think it will be free. So with that, that's all I have.
All right, any questions for Councilmember Cooper? I would just like to add that we need to include in that impact is to our nonprofit sector, the impact of a...
Yes, nonprofits are businesses, so we got them.
But not everybody, when they think small business, they think the, you know, brick and mortar is downtown, so.
Everything's on the table for the process.
All right, thank you. Councilmember, or Mayor Protam Bateman?
Thank you, Mayor Selby. I have nothing to report.
Councilmember Jones?
Thank you, I have nothing to report this evening.
All right, Councilmember Gilman?
Thank you, Mayor Selby. Intercity Transit met last week, and one piece I wanted to flag for us, this is way advanced notice, but one likely impact of implementing the service expansions funded by Proposition 1 will be a request for more space downtown. It could be street space around the Olympia Transit Center. If we're able to implement the Bus Rapid Transit light, it would be space for bus stops along Fourth Avenue. So that's, that's coming, that besides money and additional staff, there's also going to be some real estate needs to expand and improve the transit system. Land Use met in one of the most exciting land use and environment committee meetings ever, last Thursday. We had a program from the Evergreen State College come in, and they have been studying this school year the possibilities of creating an eco-district, a more sustainable and resilient downtown community, focusing on the block where the Timberland Library is and the Fertile Ground guesthouse, and imagining going out from there. So we had eight groups provide sort of little two-minute reports from these teams, and it was so inspiring to hear how much of what was wild ideas a generation ago is just ordinary language for these people and their hopes for our community, and that their knowledge and their expectations about green building practices, about conservation of water, about community spaces are really inspiring, and we'll hope to continue to engage with them across this school year. And the city has a new interest because of our acquiring the Fertile Grounds Commons space, that we have the potential to play in some of that, what's the right kind of development, and could this help foster interesting, interdependent community and sustainable development in that greater neighborhood? So it was, it was a blast, I thought. The other report we had was a little more buttoned down. It was an update on the downtown parking strategy, also exciting, and at the end of the process, the downtown parking strategy. So we made one revision to the draft that's currently published on the website. We pulled out the residential parking permits and the residential parking areas in the South Capital from this proposal, and we recommended that the proposal be moved forward for council consideration. So that'll, that'll be scheduled for a future council agenda. And then I just wanted to flag that March 5th, we'll be having the snow-rescheduled public hearing on the multifamily property tax exemption boundary expansion, to expand our multifamily property tax exemption beyond downtown. So that's, that's going to come back up on the 5th. And last, I just want to say that this snowstorm response, both by staff and community, I think is a testament to where we're at. After a year of really taking on new work, stretching, growing, we were confronted with a huge mess from the storm, and we had staff working outside of their job descriptions, outside of their usual departments, working all odd hours to cover 24 hours a day, and coming out of it with a pretty positive feeling. So I just, I think we're on the right track, and I think that that's testament to that. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for Councilmember Gilman? Councilmember Parshley?
I just have one addition for the land use and the eco-district. One of the most intriguing things, if you've ever watched a child expend energy, one of the groups recommended a mechanism to harness that with new types of, what was it, a spinning wheel generator, like what you use for wind generation, if you put it on a merry-go-round and on swings, and it was great, I love it. We've all said it at some point in our life. I only have two items to report. I attended the Lot board meeting. We had elections. Cynthia Pratt has been re-elected the president. Mayor Pete Kement has been elected the vice chair, and I must give a shout-out to the mayor and our team that came and gave an update on the homelessness response plan. I also attended the Community Care Advisory Board meeting this last Thursday, and they are very excited about the trends they're seeing, and what they're doing, and what they're seeing. They are actually visualizing what their plans were two years ago, that they've become more of a clinic. They now have a nearly full-time nurse practitioner, and they were worried about her schedule being filled, but it's already becoming a common, for her schedule to be full, and she's getting repeat guests coming back. So they're pretty excited about what they're seeing and their future.
Thank you. Any questions for Councilmember Parshley? All right, City Manager Report, Steve Hall.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Three quick items. First, in response to Councilmember Gilman's comments about intercity transit, staff is already working with them to find more bus space downtown. We want to help them continue to expand our multimodal options, so we're working on that. Second thing, Keith has left, I think, because he was tired, but he gave a lot of kudos to a lot of people on the Code Blue, but you may know or may not know that Keith was actually one of those volunteers going out, handing out gloves, and moving mattresses throughout the entire crisis. And in fact, I was watching the emails go back and forth, and at one point, they were asking who would take gloves and blankets to the jungle, and Keith said, "I'm on it, I'm going right now." And I thought my email said 4:30 a.m., it actually said 4:30 p.m., but I thought he was out there at 4:30 a.m. I was about to say, "What are you doing?", and I realized it was at p.m., but, so he was one of those volunteers, so he really takes us to heart, was really instrumental on not only talking about it, but doing it. And third, we have, at the council's retreat last month, you authorized moving ahead with a policy analyst RFQ. We're going through applications now, and I had three councilmembers respond to my email about volunteering to do interviews with those finalists, so Councilmember Cooper, Councilmember Jones, and Mayor Protam Bateman. So with your concurrence, I will line up interviews with those three as your representatives to find us a policy analyst. I see heads, so, thank you. That's all I have.
All right, any questions for Steve? All right, with no further business before the Olympia City Council, we're adjourned.